We don't have a quorum, we'll have to go home.
Why would we not have a quorum?
I don't know. Just there's Andrew and, you know, we only got three.
Marilyn's here though, right?
She was.
She left.
I think she left.
To not participate in the discussion?
Please.
So she's not going to be here to participate in the discussion there?
She chose to leave.
Timoletti? Now, can you feel like to call a bunch of special meetings from now on the end of the year?
Who?
He calls a bunch of special meetings from now on the end of the year.
Okay.
You can think as much out of Mr. Blair as you can.
Can you?
Feeling stressed.
So if we don't have an official quorum to do the meeting, we can still have an unofficial discussion, I guess, is that?
We can still talk.
Okay.
Sure.
Don't know.
Well, Mr. Stankert's usually a few minutes late.
Because he has to drive in from Westchester.
Yeah, he's got a ways to go.
And Tammy, like she told us ahead of time, she could not be here, so.
Yeah, she couldn't be here tonight.
It's at no fault of her that she's not here, so.
Yeah, I know traffic.
Traffic was bad. Mr. Mumford.
Mr. Mumford. How am I late?
Siri, one minute. But you make our quorum.
The fact that you're here, we're happy about.
I'm happy about it. Let's get out of here. Load it down.
All right. Just go ahead and start. Okay, we'll call this Committee of the Whole Meeting to order. So on our agenda is the previous ordinance that was placed in Committee of the Whole that was considered at the last council meeting. So we are here to have an open discussion. So I will open it up. The floor. Mr. Bonsell.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So if, I think we all remember at the last council meeting, we had, you know, it was pretty long, so it should've stuck in our memory there. But we had a discussion about the C-9 Trust Retirement Healthcare Program and about specifically about the ordinance creating the retiree benefit program. And so at that meeting, after we went 45 minutes, you know, trying to see if we could work out our differences, because, you know, at that point, I was, I think we were all under the impression that there was a timeline that we kind of needed to hit. You know, we worked, we tried, we did our best, we deliberated an open session, like, you know, I think the citizens, you know, were probably appreciative that we did. But we couldn't come to an agreement at that time. And then really more importantly is that the Law Department wouldn't have had enough time at that point to make all of the changes, the 20 objections or 20 questions that a council member had, that they wouldn't have had the time to make, to fix all of that. So at that meeting, we scheduled, we scheduled Committee of the Whole Meeting, you know, I guess at my request, to try to see if we can come together and talk about this and see if we can find some resolution. And so, yeah, after the Committee of the Whole Meeting was scheduled, so I think it was on Thursday, you know, I sent an email to the council member that had the questions, asking, can you please send the, you know, any list of things that you want to see changed in it so that we can prepare for it? So I got a couple of things from that council member, I think the, and then I just see the rest of the council on it. But also, we just need to find out what are the other objections to it? So the three that we have is, you know, we need to find who's going to oversee the program, what are the guarantees for getting paid, then should the ordinance include a provision authorizing a contract? So those are three questions that we had in the email. We just need to figure out what other questions there are so that we can try to address them and so that we can try to move forward with this.
I was not on that email, so thank you for listing those things.
Yeah, I think I sent it to, well, we'll work on it after the meeting to find out what happened there, but I apologize that you were not there.
That's okay. At this point, I'm quite happy I was not on it.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so basically at this point, it's kind of an open up for discussion for open, I mean, if that's okay with the chair, but I would love to hear, are there any other objections that we don't currently have right here that we need to add to the list so that we can talk about? If that's okay with you.
It's an open discussion, I'm open for anything.
Only question I have, what's the rush all of a sudden?
I mean.
I thought that, that the, that, that wanted this done by the end of the year so that we could start out the year with the new plan and count, in order to establish the budget and have that included in the financial recovery plan. I don't know when the millennial plan.
We can't pass an ordinance anytime we want to anymore?
I don't know when the millennial plan expires. I have no idea when that is.
Well, didn't the other plan kick back into gear November the first?
I have no idea, I just said that. I don't know.
It did.
I have no idea.
Let me tell you, it did. November the first. It's in effect.
And I don't know, I have no idea, Mr. Stith is out of the country, so.
Well, Mr. Gears told me.
So I have no idea if we can, if we can cancel that in the mid-year, if we can give notice, I don't know.
Yeah, so.
I don't know.
Here we are spinning wheels again.
Yeah, I don't actually think, I kind of disagree with the previous council member, I don't think we're spinning wheels at all, I think this is a discussion that, I mean, even if it doesn't go into effect on.
For the things we don't know, we're spinning wheels. We've already got the millennial plan insurance.
From, the understanding that I had is that it could be canceled at any point, so it didn't have to, or at least at the end of the month.
Well, you know, any of these ordinances can be canceled at any point too.
Yeah, so I don't understand why you're adverse to having the discussion.
I don't know what the rush is, that's what, I can't get a good answer.
I don't understand why there's a, I don't, there's a rush, like I don't know why we can't just have a discussion about the.
That's what my question is too. Why is there a rush?
Yeah, this has been talked, well, let's say, this has been talked about and talked about.
I know, I was on the committee. For years. And all of a sudden, I was taken off and you folks took over. And now here we are hurrying.
Yeah.
I don't understand that.
I made a motion in August 2016, Mr. Mumford, to create a committee for the C-9 Trust specific council committee so that we could look into it. There was no second, there was no, you didn't want to look into it back then, and so now all of a sudden, we want to, you're getting upset because we're looking into it now.
No, I was on the committee for years, ever since I was, got on council in 2004, I was on the C-9 Trust Committee, meeting with Mr. Gatto and Mr. Walters and other people that are here right now. I came to meetings and spoke out on what the issues were, that sort of thing. And nothing ever came to be of it.
Excuse me, I don't believe it was a council committee you were talking about at that time.
Yes, it was.
No, it was, yes. And at that time, we were working together. We were just starting and you, I'm sorry, I think we're going to get off the subject here and we don't want that to happen tonight. We don't want a replay of last week.
So last week, we had, I know at least a couple of council members said that, including, you know, Mr. Mumford, that said that this isn't ready yet. So at this point, I'm just kind of asking, what is not ready about it? Like what do we need, what else do we need to fix about it? I mean, that's what.
Well, you listed some things to begin with.
Yeah, I've got the, I've got the three.
Who's going to be in charge of doing the things that need to be done? To maintain, who for the city's going to be in charge?
Excellent. Do we have, do you have any suggestions on?
No.
Who you think should be in charge? So who's in charge of it today?
Joe Gears. Michelle.
Yeah, no.
Joe Gears administers it.
So at that point, okay, so then should we put in here that the Service Director, the Safety Director is the one that administers, I mean, you know, the question came up is that it's not specific in here, who either, who administers the program? So we can fix that question. Did you want to put Joe Gears back in there?
I want to, no.
Did we want to put the Treasurers out?
Has he been spoken to about it?
The question is, who do we, who, at this point, we're trying to figure out who we want to handle this, so.
I think at the council meeting, Mr. Stith said he would be willing to like send letters and things like that, so. I think confirming with him that he'd be willing to do that and also collect responses or someone within his office. My only other objection was with the current ordinances that people who maybe miss a year to apply would be completely out of the program for life. I don't have language or anything, but I'd like to see that tweaked in a way that somebody, I mean, different scenarios were brought up, but, you know, if someone has an issue, they're not able to, they missed the deadline, I don't think it's fair that they're out completely.
Well, you know, government programs have deadlines to file for things too, and what they do is usually put it off for X period of time if you miss the deadline.
Yeah.
I think Mr. Stanker mentioned that at the last meeting.
Yeah.
Well, you know, Medicare, Social Security, the whole deal is set up that way.
Yeah.
So it's not a problem, it's just something that it needs to be addressed and it needs to be taken care of.
Right.
Excellent.
That was the two main things that I had. I'm okay with the rest of it.
Okay.
We're discussing this ordinance?
Correct.
I had a question for Mr. Moore, if possible. Is it your understanding too that the Auditor's Office was, is still willing to, you know, I guess, take care, you know, take care of those administrative measures to make sure the program's running?
My suggestion on that, because there's a number, as far as overseeing, there's a number of questions on that. One of them is who oversees accepting and reviewing the applications, the annual applications, that would be the committee. Mailing of this particular notice, mailing of that particular notice, the issuing of the check, there's different duties involved with this. And those could easily be divided up among different places and different, Mr. Stith, after the meeting mentioned, or before he left the meeting last week, mentioned that, you know, it might make sense for the, I think, his understanding is the Treasurers Office sends out things to employees regarding health insurance, so that may be the place to do it, but it's easy enough to leave that blank at this point and over the next, the course of whatever, consult with their various, you know, offices in the city to see which one makes the most sense and fill those in. I mean, but I understand that the concern is like the idea is that, oh, we should make clear who so we actually know that the notices and copies of the forms and, oh, here's, the plan's going to update, so here's what you can expect kind of thing, that those should be, you know, it makes sense to delineate exactly who's going to send that out. And it probably would make sense to, you know, ask around to see who, where that fits best, but that's easy, that's an easy enough thing to take care of. The question is how much in the ordinance needs to be spelled out of exactly what needs to go out beyond what may be in there already.
Excuse me, is it my understanding that if this would be adopted, that the same type of letter would be sent out annually to advise people that it's that time of year to apply for your $3,200 payment for 2018, 2019, 2020, or whenever? I mean, was that?
It's not spelled out in the ordinance, but it's, generally, that's the way the offices in the city work, like, yo, your time's coming up and so they send, you know, generally when there's, you know, that's what they tend to do, it's easy enough to spell out that, you know, every year by this date, a letter will go out with a copy of the registration form, application form, saying, this is due by January 31st or whatever date. That, that's something that could be spelled out in an ordinance either now or later, but yeah.
That application every year was actually, my understanding, I was not at those meetings, but that suggestion was made by a member of the committee because apparently when each year, Benovations sends out a letter to, who was the current administrator, sends out a letter to all the participants asking, right now, for copies of their insurance and how much insurance will cost them and all that, and so that they know how much to reimburse the eligible person each month for the cost of those insurance benefits. So it was at the suggestion of one of the participants in the meeting that that be done.
I'd also like to say that after that was discussed by these participants, they had talked about an application and then after you applied and you were accepted, then you would register every year. Be the same thing, but it would be called registering, so every year, you're not sitting there going, oh, am I going to be kicked off?
Yeah.
Would that registration be the follow-up from the reminder letter or the?
I think the, from my understanding, that the reminder letter would have, include the registration form or the application form or whichever you'd want to call it, and so then they, and it would include the deadline in there, and so they would send, fill it out and send it in. But I do agree, the point that was made, I forgot who made it, but, you know, that we should change the language so that, I think it's Mr. Clerk, you know, I think that we should change the language so that we can figure out exact, you know, we don't want people kicked, they just forget to fill out their form that year, they're not permanently for their entire life kicked out of the program. So I think we can.
Not out for that year?
I mean, however, do we want to put like a deadline where they get a couple days extra, I mean, however we are, but let's just say they just don't make any contact with the City of Norwood that year for some reason. Let's, you know, they were in a nursing home, what have you, or they just couldn't do it. I don't want them to be out forever if they then say, hey, you know, oops, I forgot to fill it out, I want to make sure that those people are. That's a big loss, not filling out a form one year.
And that's easy enough to do, the real question is, okay, if they miss the first year, are they out? Or can they get, you know, if you don't do it, and this passes next year, doesn't have, if they don't register in the spring of 2019, are they then out? Or is there a way to, oh, I've missed and file a new application for that, which I'm assuming would be clustered under the same thing as for current employees that would not be eligible for benefits, but we could set that up that way as well, but I'm assuming that, well, I don't know, I mean, does that, is like you, the initial application, do you have to get it in the first year this is in effect, or you're out? Or is it, oh, if you miss the first year, you can come back later at some point and say, oh, I should be in, but I never, I've never submitted it? That would be the question.
I thought the object of this was that if you, that you had to apply the first year so that you knew who was in, who would ever be in, that there would not be any deviation from that. I got that impression from Mr. Stith. He also talked about perhaps mailing out those initial applications in December with the March 31st deadline, and if we didn't hear back, and you could spell it out if that's what you wanted to do. If you didn't hear back from somebody by a certain date, you would send another one and another one, and specifically that first year to make sure that every, that they got the application. Just a suggestion from the discussions that I heard sitting there last Tuesday. Nothing wrong with sending out an application early.
Yeah, I would agree with Madam President there that we need, you know, I'm willing, you know, whatever we need to do to make the contact, I think we really need to get these forms in this year, like I think it might, it would be a disservice if we, five years from now, we get more people added because all of a sudden, they worked for the City of Norwood or, I think it would just, it would be very confusing for trying to, for planning purposes and for the, for the object of the program, so.
I don't think that's possible to happen, that in five years, you're going to have a bunch of people. I mean, the way that things are written, and I agree with you, and I agree, and I know it was in here, I think it is in here, that the first year you apply, but then after you apply and you're accepted, if you don't apply for a couple of years, if you're still working, or whatever, you can still apply when you, when you're out, you know, when you quit.
As long as you make the initial application.
And I do agree that, and I think that was in here at one point.
I would think, I would think you have to have.
Do you, will you take comments from, do you mind taking comments from?
I'm okay.
I'm not in charge.
You all are not objecting to it? Come on up.
Here.
Wherever you want. Come on now, come up to the microphone so people can hear you at home. I know you'd rather have a root canal than do that, Terry.
But give me a couple glasses of wine, I'll probably talk all night.
Get her a bottle of wine.
Joe walked up with me to church one time and he said, I better hold the wine, I said, it's not gonna, that won't happen. Just kidding. Anyway, this goes back so far and I appreciate everybody's time on council, the other councils, this has been going on so long. I retired in 2003 and I accepted this position, which I think I'm the only really person that's on the C-9 Trust Committee besides Joe Gears. I took Rosemary Teppi's position when she passed and then aft, and that was with Hockbines, and then after the, a new administration came in, we had a vote on the C-9 Trust, you know, the members, luckily I won, I mean, that was, thank God. I mean, I don't know what I would have done if I didn't. I won, I was still working part-time after I retired here because I was bored, but, and so the rest of the committee were not working, but I made time to get back and forth to the meetings, and this really wasn't what I was going to be focusing on, so I really should get off of it. But anyway, we had a committee members, we tried to get ahold of administration, they would not get back with us. I had several times that I wanted to make a suggestion only of like, you know, helping out, you knew, we knew it was a tremendous cost to the city, but I wanted to help out so everybody would at least get something instead of nothing, and we knew at all times, they could just stop it. They didn't have to have a reason, just said, stop it, we don't have the money, so you're not getting anything. I wanted to say maybe just have the members only, and I'm sorry, Jenny, but, you know, I mean, there's no way to help make everybody happy, never, ever in anything. I just wanted the members to be on. Let the spouses go, the children, there should be no children, that, that was, this, I don't know how that got above and beyond, it shouldn't have happened, these are retirees, people retired do not have children, or they shouldn't be, anyway. And so, but they would not talk to us, absolutely refused. I think it was, I can't remember if it was Joe Stanker or John Mumford came to one of our meetings that, and then we had no other choice, and this was like 10, I don't know, 12 years ago, I don't even know how long. Gatto and Walters were, let's sue them, let's, you know, and I'm like, we didn't want to do that, but we had no other choice, nobody would talk to us. So we sued them and, of course, Joe Gears and Walters had no money, we as the C-9 Trust had been collecting money for years and years and years from the retirees, the guys, and they, we had like $20,000, we spent it, we spent it on attorneys, we had no money. And then, so anyway, I think it was kind of a warship that came out, like, you know, we would lose, so we just kind of, I think, kind of went go. Walters and Gatto didn't want to let it go, they, you know, found another attorney, they wanted me to go back and ask my people, PRS people, not my, my, you know, I was there for PRS people. I said, I'm not asking nobody for any more money, I'm not putting anything into this, you know, the city can just say, you know, we're not doing anything, we know, you know, we never went anywhere last time. The city still would not talk to us. I do blame the current administration, it was horrible just not being able to come and try to make some kind of decision, you know, anything, right or wrong, or, you know, some, something halfway. Anyway, Walters and them went on, they didn't include me in a lot of stuff, I came here to a meeting one time, not this council, the last council, and they said, what is she here? And I just said, wow, she was, you know, blah, 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 and I'm like, yeah, and so anyway, they never included me anything, I said, you know, I'm not going to fool with you guys, and nobody ever contacted us anyway. We had one or two meetings after that, and I never had anything else. So I don't know, when you guys are talking about the committee, I just read this ordinance about the volunteer, something, something, I don't know if that's Gatto and them, I mean, I have a, they, we had a meeting, I've got the minutes and everything, excuse me, oh my God, I'm talking too much, they.
You're good.
But we, on a committee, we, Mrs. Adams was a retired police officer, wife, and she was, she ran everything for a long, long time by herself, was doing great, and then, and myself, and then there was, I think, Dick Heidman, she was for the police, he was for the fire, and I was for PRS, the three of us. We had a meeting and we invited an attorney and talked to them, and Gatto and Walters were there, and then we decided to have a committee to help us out. One was on Medicare and the other one wasn't because it was just, there was different things for C-9 Trust, like I'm on Medicare now, almost, and that was the intention, I thought I was one of the last ones on the list, which I'm not going to get into, I don't want to stop anything. My original thing is to come in and just say, anybody plans on taking everything away from us, please, can we just pass this as it is for the $3,600, I've only heard, I've nearly never even read it, $3,200, $3,600, whatever it is, I know there's wordage, there's verbiage to be straightened out, but, but anyway, I have the minutes and everything. We elected our little committee, connected, elected another little committee, Gatto and Walters and Bob Bellman, Bobby Marion, and I don't know who the other person was, you know, but, and then they just took off. So they were the committee members and I was nothing, I mean, not the, I, well, we never did anything anyway, nothing ever happened, so these guys went, whoa, you know, and I didn't want to get in their way anyway, but, so anyway, I think, and I never got a letter that they, that I'm being let go or not, you know, on the committee, I never sent in a letter saying that I resigned, which Gatto keeps on telling everybody that I quit, but, so I don't know what's gone on from then on and nor do I care, I've just been involved from different people, I've heard from several people that they were going to take the insurance away, and I know this has been coming on forever, and something should have been done about it a long, long time ago. It seems like it's always us at the very end of the thing, well, let's, let's do it, we got to do it next week. I'm not complaining about that, I know you guys have been arguing about this, in fact, we have, we've been fighting it for years, and we just come and say, okay, they're going to take it us away, and so we try to come up with another, well, we can't offer anything anyway, nobody will talk to us. I mean, sorry, including council members, that we've sent letters, I've got the letters, we've sent everything to all the council people to, nobody could either not, it wasn't legal, they couldn't meet with us, or they wouldn't meet with us, nothing, not even a phone call, no, you know, so what do you do, you know? But if you plan, and from what I heard, several people, and I, you know, I know something's got to be done, I know, and I, you know, you're never going to please everybody, you just can't, but I wish, I don't want to stop anything, which I know you guys don't even know who I am, all of a sudden, you know, here she comes, she says, she's, you know, but please, just either, if you have to pass it, if it's a, you know, an emergency something by before January 1st, or else we're going to lose everything, or have a possibility of losing everything after the new council comes in, you know, hey, let's pass it. I think, can we not change the verbiage or the wordage? We get, Benovations sends us something, oh, Benovations, they send us something every year. It's not really, I don't think it's an application, it's a information thing, for the same thing that we do everything, every year, we send it out, does your husband do blah, blah, you know, and insurance and Medicare and all of that? And then, you know, you go, so I don't know about the application would be so horrible, I don't know that they should be able to just kick you off if you don't, you know, answer, but anyway, that's, and I'm not even trying to put my, I'm to Carol House, how you word everything, I just want to make sure that the citizens, and I'm not up here for myself because I'm on Medicare and, you know, I'm, it's, you know, I don't have that many bills. on Medicare and, you know, I'm, it's, you know, I don't have that many bills or anything anymore and my husband's a retired policeman. They started out with the same thing from, from them. They paid for all of their insurance completely. And they, little by little, they taken away, taken away. They said, "We're not in the insurance business," which I know you are not either. And, but this had been going on so long, it was horrible to take away from these people, just horrible. Why would you consider doing this? I feel sorry for the very elderly, elderly people, but I still don't know if they're on Medicare, how, I don't know how bad it would be, but anyway, they finally just, they went on AARP, the Cincinnati Police Department. But anyway, if, if there's a way that if we're gonna lose what we have, which you're offering to us, please just go ahead and pass it if it has to be passed, and let's just go on. And please, in 2018, if anybody wants to talk to me about any of this stuff, believe, but I am gonna put in my, I think, letter of resignation, even though, I don't, I probably, maybe I was let go and don't even know it, but I didn't get a letter, so I'm pretending that I'm still on. Still the committee member.
And I think probably what you're referring to is after the lawsuit, wasn't there an agreement that there would be a committee, a committee that would meet regularly? And I think that's what you're talking about, and then, John, you were gonna be our representative from council.
Right. And, and we put that-
So we got several committees-
A lot of people didn't want their names on it that were on the committee, so of course, Gatto and, and Walters volunteered, and I put my name, so it was just three of us. But them two were just like, I mean, just gung ho, and I mean, you couldn't really talk to them two either, and I'm not saying, I wouldn't say anything unless they were here, I'd say the same thing. I mean, I was hoping that they would, so they, you know, if anyone had any doubts about it. But 2018, if anybody wants to talk about anything with this stuff, there was a lot of people hired, or a lot of people put on this list that should've never have been, the main thing was 2075, you had to have been hired before 2075?
No, 1975.
I'm sorry. Yeah, 2075's not quite here yet.
It just feels like 2075.
How long have I been up here?
No, why?
Why? Yeah, 1975. And all of a sudden, somehow, all these people start getting on here and I, I'm on the committee, I think, and I can't even get a list. I, I have gotten, always gotten one from Mary Ann Teeter when she was in the treasures office, and she always gave them to us, updates. I got several of them for Brenda, but the last one I got was not up to date, I've heard that there were several people put on it since then, but that's here and there. That, I'm not worried about that now, I don't want to stop anything, I want, I would hope for that you guys could just move forward and we could go on and just do something about this, just, I don't care if it's right or wrong, please just don't take everything away from us, let us have as much as we can.
Teri, quick question. When you, the committee, when you contacted all the members before, how did you, did you communicate via regular registered mail, or, or, I mean, how, how was everybody notified of meetings and/or changes and/or supplemental things, or was that all-
Well, there wasn't many, anything except for us meeting, nobody else met with us, but when we did notify the people, I took like the PERS people, and I, I don't, Mrs. Adams was doing that then, of course she's passed. And I can get some more information from her relatives, they've got some, some of her old stuff, but, and then the, Dick Heidman, he was a fireman, he would do the firemen, she would do the police, I would do PERS. We, we just took our own money, we didn't, you know, we didn't take, I didn't take money out of the little fund that we had, we just mailed, and it wasn't certified, we just mailed. But anything we got, like when I was, won the election, we didn't even have a party or anything, but- But it came from the mayor's office or the safety service director. And the last correspondence that I have when I was, that Joe Gears was on there, and I don't know if the mayor is, I don't know who, I mean, I don't, as far as I know, it's just me and him. And of course, he's never called me about anything, so I, I don't know. So, but I would just like to have you guys do something, and I know, like you said, there's nobody that's gonna be, there's, not everyone's gonna be happy. And this has been going on so long, something has to be done. You guys have more important things to do, I mean, not as far as really, I guess, we're concerned, but we know that there is. And, you know, we all love this city, we don't want, you know, and, you know, we don't want to harm the city, and I think if somebody would've been reasonable a long time ago and just talked to us, my God, we could've had something done, you know.
I think, you know, point well taken, and, you know, I think I gives, I give this council credit for taking it on.
I do too.
It would be easy to kick it down the road like has been done before, but we can't do that now, we don't have the money to do that.
Right.
I, I've said in the past that I've considered what, you know, people retire based on a certain set of circumstances. I did it, you did it, we all do it. And it's my hope that we can give you as much as possible, and I think everybody feels that way. But circumstances change, as you say.
Absolutely.
I said the other night, I'm on, I'm O-Pers, and you know, we started out with a certain allotment for insurance and that has gone down, and our, our spouses and families were covered, and now they're trying to stay fiscally responsible. And so that has changed in order to make sure that there are, there's funds for the future of, future retirees in order to be in that. And so I consider the discussions that are taking place to be exactly what is happening with O-Pers and what's happening with the Police and Fire Pension Fund.
They're doing the same thing, they're cutting-
And so I think we want to provide you as much as possible for the people who deserve it, for the people who were initially, who should've initially been in the program.
Right.
And I, I don't, I don't want to speak for the rest of council, I know that I speak for the rest of council when I say that we want to give you as much as we can within the confines of our limited budget.
And I think you would, after all of this, if, like what we're giving up, you know, it probably, to a lot of people, it is a lot, but I would think that you would work with this and give us as much as we could, you know.
Mr. Moore?
Yeah.
Speak up, you don't need to raise your hand.
Oh, sorry.
This is very informal tonight.
So, from my understanding of all this, from everything that's perspired through the years, is that basically communication has been a huge problem-
Awful.
-the whole time, for as long as this thing's been going on. From my understanding, Venovations and the city do not communicate well, which leads into the problems of, you know, being paid up and not being paid up. I know the process is a little wishy-washy and you have to deal with a bunch of receipts and it goes to one person and it's supposed to get sent out. And I know that this, it hasn't been done properly for the people that have earned it. So, as we've talked about before, the pre-75 people who sacrificed and gave up their certain benefits, they deserve to be done right. And from my understanding, and I could be wrong, and I have no problem being told I'm wrong here, but is the reason why I thought, or initially thought that this was for a rush, and Mr. Mumper may know the answer for this, is that I was told December 14th would be the Millennium Plan expiration, or when that goes back into effect, and the point of trying to get something passed before then was to avoid being on the hook for that for next year. And I want to know if anybody knows the answer to that, if that's true. Mr. Moore?
The original timeline on this to get something passed was, I'm not sure when we can cancel the Millennium Plan. It's less that than it is, if Millennium Plan's not gonna be in place as of January 1st, you need to give everybody 30 days' notice. So it had, if we were gonna do it to impact 2018, it had to be passed before the, before December ended so that the 30-day notice could go out to every single member. So right now, it's too late to pass anything to affect 2018, but, you know, as far as why the discussion now, why not? I mean, it doesn't have to pass December 14th, it doesn't have to pass January 15th, but, you know, if, you know, spread it out and have the discussion and get somewhere, at least get language in place and provisions in place, that for the most part satisfy, maybe not, "I don't like this plan," or "I don't like," you know, there's, there's, "I don't like this, it's not enough, I, I think it should be, you know, the, the benefit should be different, the clash should be defined differently," but as far as the nuts and bolts of the way the thing would work, at the very least, we should be able to get that straightened out without too much difficulty, I hope. Without, you know, once, once we know what it is that everybody wants in the thing, put that in, put it together, and if it doesn't pass this year, it's right there and ready to go as a draft to go into next, next, you know, because everything starts over January 1st, and, and start right there. And the sooner you start, the sooner you start having readings of this thing, the more people are aware of it, the more time you have to give, the more note, time you have to give notice to people, "Hey, this is going to change, you will need to get a form in." And if it passes in, in December, or if it passes in, something passes in January, then you can send a letter out in, you know, within 30 days after that says, "This is gonna change." And then you can later on follow up with another one, "Remember that form we sent you? That's gotta be in in six months." And you can send another one, says, "You know that form we sent you? It's gotta be in in three months," so that there's more time to get all this stuff worked out, so. But the bottom line deadline, the only real hard deadline was by December, well, November 30th, so that notices could go out before the end of the year before a plan changed.
And I thought there was some urgency about folks who maybe would've needed to have signed up for a different insurance plan-
Right, and that's where you have to get the notice.
Because there are open enrollment periods and this would affect their open enrollment period. Now, I don't know if there are, there are exceptions to those rules for open, open enrollments so that if you have a life-changing event, like if you get divorced, or if you have a child, you can add children on, if losing your insurance, like if you retire, or you lose your health insurance, then there are exceptions to the open, open enrollment period. I don't know whether losing this program would be considered one of those life-changing events, or the events that would allow other people who may use this for their insurance, whether they, that would allow them to get some other insurance. Again, questions that I don't have the answer to, just throwing it out as to why I think there was some initial urgency.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
So, Mr. Moore, just to quite follow up on that, is there that same, let's just say that we, I mean, do you know, can that, can the Millennium Plan, could that be, with 30-day notice, could that be canceled like in February to end, you know, April, or March 31st?
Under the terms of the policy, I have no idea, but I know just as a rule for health insurance, if you don't pay the premiums, your policy's canceled. But the thing here, I mean, the big thing here is to give people enough notice. I don't know if it's, how hard it is to get, if you're gonna get, I don't know what the, you know, the follow-up would be, if I'm gonna get Medicare Part C or D or H or whatever they have, that would fill part, at least part of that gap. I, I don't know what the qualifications would be as far as getting into that before, you know, what kind of the time, can you do that in July? Can you do it in, I have no clue. So my thinking would be, it would be more through the end of next year, because if we keep, if anything's in place, it's also gonna, it's also gonna impact the C-9 reimbursements, and I don't know how you do that if it's gonna be, you know, the bulk of those claims are paid out in the first quarter, so-
Yep, yep.
You know, how that would play out, if that's a whole different world. So I would, unless somebody really thinks it's important for some reason, I would, let's stick with calendar years as far as making changes, because otherwise, I don't know what kind of problems that's gonna cause.
I just got paid for three, uh, three or four years ago for my prescriptions that were, were due me, I just got, so, I mean, I'm not saying, I'm not-
I understand.
I'm not trying to complain, I'm just saying, everybody's went through this on almost all of our money, you know, not, I'm not complaining, you know, we-
No, and we pay an administration fee to Venovation to run the program, which seems very counterintuitive when they're not administering the program.
That was one of the things I wanted to do too. Why don't we hire somebody, even part-time, and let them take care of our-
Or use that administration fee to give to the retirees.
Right.
Did you have anything else, Teri?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, yeah.
Jenny? Can you, can you come up so people can hear you? I'm sorry.
There was, she was sorry because she was talking about taking the widows out of that. And when she made that comment, that truly bothered me because, one, my husband was one of the negotiating people in the fire department, as I've said before, who negotiated this because of going without raises and that. It's my understanding it was Police and Fire who negotiated that, and then the PERS people had a "me too" clause in their contract, and that's how they got it to start with. So, that's all I have to say. I think it's wrong to try to take off widows or widowers, I mean, I understand-
And not that anybody has, we have no intention of doing that in this ordinance.
Well, I just know that was a comment that she made, she said, "I'm sorry that this is the way I feel."
That was just something I said, I was just trying to negotiate with, not necessarily take them away, just try to negotiate something with just the members.
I think if we're gonna get this done, we need to make it as simple and as clear as we can make it.
As what?
Simple and clear as we can make it.
Yep.
And I, you know, I don't know where anybody else has gotten their information, I know you've got information, James has information, you know, I've been trying to get information and can't get information, so I know what I'm working with, and I have had no idea what I'm working with.
In terms of like what, what information?
Anything on the plans, anything with the plans.
Current plans?
Yes, the current plans, or what's being worked on, and I do know, I mean, there were several, there were several, the meeting started October 2nd. And what I know is, I, from talking to the people who were in the me, two of the people who were in the meeting, which would be Dave and my husband, John, who I'm not gonna go into why he was on there and he didn't want to be. In the meeting, certain things were discussed, and as it's already been said, what was discussed isn't what came out of these. And there were things, like I think we ought to look at, you know, right in here it does say surviving spouses and individuals, but it needs to be clarified that, you know, after the date of this is passed, if you get divorced, you're not covered, things like that. I know that they had agreed, and one of the big things on this was to keep this clean, that nobody, that, you know, they weren't gonna move to take anybody off, even though there's question of who should and shouldn't be on it. They had talked about law, the lawsuits that could occur, this and that, but they just wanted to try to make it clean. And when I was surprised when I heard that, you know, it could, it could be interpreted in different ways. And that's why the current list of retirees should be considered part of the eligible participants at one point.
Are you saying that that was discussed in the, in the, in the meeting?
Yes.
Because that-
Then we have with the, the contract, you know, this is where, I, I don't know what was said in the contract, but this is what the retirees were told. So I'm, you know, just so everybody, I'm trying to work with, trying to get information from here and there, and everybody I can, to find out what was done and said, because I haven't been able to get it from the administration. And, and we all know that's where some of this problem came from, is that there was misinformation, you know, all along between the auditor, the retiree, admin, what do you call it, representatives, and then the retirees. So that's what I have been looking at, trying to get, you know, what I know they've talked about, and some of the decisions. I mean, I'd like to see this get done also. I think it needs to get done. And that's all I'm gonna say.
So when you, thank you for sharing that. When you say that there's people that are in the current program that are not in the new program, like what kind-
I don't know that there isn't, I think that the, I don't know, I know nothing, I haven't been able to get anybody to answer these questions. I know that when I look at how it could be interpreted, it can be, you know, it could be interpreted in several different ways when you read it, and it needs to be clear.
So what changes would you suggest that we make to, I guess, are you, you're saying that you want to see language that says, "Anybody that's currently in the program," type goes to the new program?
Should be considered part of the eligible participants. I mean, the, the amount of money you're talking about- you're talking about, and had this been, I will just say, if had this been worded like they thought it was going to be worded, it would have been passed before the first, unfortunately. And it would have taken effect last time. So...
I guess, I've talked to Mr. Gatto and Mr. Walters, and I got the impression that that was not the intent, was that this was going to, this was going to be only for those people for whom it was originally intended, and not for, not for...
If you heard Mr. Gatto.
Children, or not for any of the people who were put on later.
If you heard Mr. Gatto, when he spoke last week, he said the intent, and it's on film, we can all see it, he said the intent was to take nobody off, or I don't know the exact wording, but that's what he said. He said, oh, that's why they had wording problems when he had gone back, because the intent was to make sure nobody was taken off. They wanted to keep clean.
I think the wording that originally came out was a little different than the wording here, because the wording here says, had to be hired prior to January 1st, 1975, and as of, and have worked full-time for twenty cumulative years for the city. And before that, the one prior to that, there had additional stipulations in, how many hours you had to work, and that was the difference in the verbiage from the original one to what the one currently that was presented. That, that was the changes that were made there.
And I think that was due because of state law. If I, if I, I pointed out that if I'm a college student, and I, back in seventy-four, seventy-three or seventy-four, I went to work for the safety lane, and I worked, I worked all summer long, and I came back and I worked on Christmas break and spring break, and then later on, I got hired on by the city of Norwood. Those hours, those part-time hours that I worked during that period of time, for the purpose of state time in grade counts, even if it's part-time work, it counts towards so many, you know, point, so many years of service. And I, so I think that's what, that's what prompted that change, to not be specific about that, just that it was, that you were hired prior to 1975, and that you had twenty years, because of the way the state calculates time in grade.
I think it also says, work full-time for twenty cumulative years.
For twenty years. You had to work full-time for the city for twenty years.
Now, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Bonzel, I mean, I just really, can you tell, where have you gotten your information from? Because you have more information than I do, and I'm just wondering where I should go to get the information.
Gotcha. I've, I've heard it from various people. I mean, I, there's, I just call around to people at the city that I, that have told me stuff, so.
I'm sorry. I mean, I'm, I just have to ask, because I can't get anything out of anybody. Has this been the mayor? Has it been Mr. Stiff? I want to know who I should be calling. If you're able to get information, I want to know who I should be calling to get information, if they'll give it to you.
Yeah, I think you should call all of the above. I mean, it's, so, but back to the participant list.
Who's all of the above? I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, the mayor, yeah. The, yeah, the mayor, the auditor, I mean, Bob Gatto, there's all kinds of people I've talked to about this, so.
Well, from the city, and that was my question, if I can't, you know, I know you've gotten some information from the city, and I just wanted to know who to go to.
Yeah, and I've talked to, I've said, I've talked to Tim Maloney about it as well, I've talked to Keith Moore about it, I've talked to Tim Gary about it. So, I mean, I don't exactly remember who's told me everything that I've gotten about it, but just various people at the city. So, so, I mean, personally, I, I mean, I thought the eligible participants, we were trying to, to truly, like, as Donna said, focus it on who it was originally intended for. So, the, you know, the people that were twenty years, and I think at one point, you know, I don't remember, again, I don't remember who I heard this from, but at one point, I was hearing that it, it was said twenty, or somebody was talking about twenty consecutive years. And so, that would have thrown out, definitely thrown out more people than would have been originally intended for this ordinance. So, I like the fact that it has the cumulative years, and has the spouses, and then the surviving, of course, surviving widows. So, and I agree with Mrs. Hanahan, that we probably should add something that says there, yeah, so if you get divorced, you're not covered. If, if somebody gets married, well, I guess, it does say current spouses, so I guess, you know, if somebody gets married, of course, in this process, we don't want to add more people there. I mean, really, I think we're just trying to add, we're trying to get the people that are currently here now and capping it off. So, anyways, long story short, I actually, I like the language, if there's language that somebody, we, somebody wants to propose that are different, if there's somebody that's missing that, you know, they want to throw out there, that, hey, this person should be in there for whatever reason, I'm, you know.
You know, in recent years, recently, ten, fifteen years ago, there was a fireman added that was injured on the job, was added to the C-9 trust. And we were told here in the council, that that was agreed, that they could be part of the C-9 trust. I don't know who said they could be, if we pass this, that person who's been getting benefits will no longer get benefits. I don't know if that's morally responsible.
What, what kind of, I mean, that's good to know. And so, and I remember that it had, there was something in the fire contract at some point, I'd heard, so. Yeah, that's the first time that this has been brought up on council floor. Do you know any more about that, Mr. Moore, by chance, sir?
There's at least one employee that is former employee, I think there's a couple that are, that became disabled on the job, and they were put in here. I think the city wanted to provide benefits. I mean, this thing, in sixty-seven, for example, the city offered, paid retire, they just kept retirees on the city's health insurance, if you had twenty years of service. That's what they did in nineteen sixty-seven, and it's just been a, it's been kind of a continuation. If the idea is to keep the same, we want to keep it the same people in it, we don't want to kick anybody out other than kids and former spouses, then essentially, we should just use the language from the 2000 ordinance. I mean, we could take out the, the specific listing of Mayor Sancker, for example, he's not collecting benefits anymore. There's a few people individually that are named, you know, but like, you know, the twenty years of service, take out the line that says mayors, law directors, auditors, and treasurers, for whom the city paid premiums, we could take that language out, I think, because none of us have had health insurance through the city since 2003, I think, was when that ordinance was passed. You know, but, I mean, keep the basic definition of employee. If the idea is not to change it, if we want to keep everybody in, but if the, I don't know, I've heard a couple of, I mean, yeah, Mr. Gatto said that, when this was first, it was first suggested to me, when I first heard that, oh, that there were discussions going on, we may need an ordinance. At that point, I went back and went through thirty years to just make sure if we were going to repeal stuff, we repealed every single one that might apply. At that point, my understanding, at least part of the idea, was to cut the number from 170 down to like 110 or 120. And I don't know what the different classifications are. When you talk about cumulative versus consecutive, I don't know who that affects. If you talk about, had to start before nineteen seven, as of January 1st, 1975 versus before 1975, I don't know if that affects anybody, or how many it affects. If you have to be a member of a union, does, I don't know how many people, if any, that affects. If it's, you know, I don't know, I don't know how this, there's been like four, five, six different versions of that basic language that has been floated past me over the last four weeks. I don't know how any of them change the actual listing of people. And that is, I think, one of the problems. What's the intent, what is council's intent as far as which people should be, or which class of people should be included, and which class should not be included? You know, I don't know the terms, whatever, the, the fire con, you know, the contract from whatever year that was, when that was in the negotiations, because the ordinance, I've seen the city provided retiree healthcare anyway, they're just included on the city's policy. We went through, the original one through Cincinnati, had a, had a health insurance, and then it was Blue Cross and Blue Shield. I mean, I don't know, I have no idea what the actual terms of that contract would have been, as part of labor negotiations, something the city, that as far as I can tell, was already offering. And the, the changes in 2000 were to shift it off of, because you couldn't get, you can't get it now, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, that offers that kind of coverage, it doesn't exist. But to provide some way to do that and take account of the, the state pension systems doing that. So, I have no clue if, can somebody, if somebody can figure out which classes of employees we want to be in. If you were a fireman for twenty years, full-time, then you should be in. Well, we can, that, that's easy enough to do. But if you were, if you worked three years in night, in the early nineteen seventies as a full-time lifeguard, and then you were appointed to this job for six years, and then you were hired as a union job for this place for eight years, and then, we don't want those people in. Well, okay, but I don't know who those are, or what the different classifications mean as far as the people that are involved. And of course, every time you add ten people, you're adding that much more as far as dollars goes, which is part of this, to get it within, you know, we want it about roughly this number. So, I, I don't know. I mean, we, I, I can't see the difference in most of the different versions of the language that have been floated around. And if there's specific people that that impact, and that's one of the reasons, ideally, to do this, we have it, we have, we have one reading with this language, do what we can to make sure people know what's in there, and then, take a look at it, are you in or out? And if you, is that, is everybody who's in, who's out, is that the intent? And, and then, two weeks later, have another reading, and then, two weeks after that, have another reading, and, and so, we're all on the same page. But we could go back to the original, you know, the two, the 2000 ordinance definition, take out the children language, the disabled employee, and the specifically named, you know, thanks for their years of service language, and we'd be down to the employees and spouses and widows, and, and use that definition. The idea is not to change anybody that's in it.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. When, over the, in the summer, I called Anna Mary about this, because I thought, you know, let's look to see, you know, what we can do with this. And she told me, right, you know, she said, don't go there. She said, the problem with that, you're a law director, that's why, is you're open, you have let these people on here for so long, you're opening yourself up for a bunch of lawsuits. And, because I was looking at this when it was, you know, I've been trying to work with this for over a year, as everybody knows. And I was looking at this when we were talking about the fiscal, you know, the fiscal plan. But she told me, that's what she said to me, you don't want to go there, because you're opening yourself up for lawsuits, because the city has allowed it for so long. And she said, that is one of the big issues here.
So, in other words, her suggestion was to do away with the plans, develop a new one?
No, 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 no. Her, no, no, that's not what she was saying at all. I was talking to her about looking into people who, who might not belong, or who have been put on that there was question about. And that's what she's saying, you have let them on so long, you know, you're going, you're going to open yourself up for a lot of lawsuits. And that's why she told me not to go there.
Well, you certainly would. If somebody has been collecting benefits, and then you say you're no longer eligible under our program, there's a really good argument that, well, you've been covering my costs for ten years, you can't decide that I don't qualify now. But that's very, very different than, we're eliminating the old program and coming up with a new one. The city's got every right to do that. That's an entirely different situation. People may not like it, but, you know, it'd be the same if we just changed the amount of the benefit. People aren't going to like it, and somebody might sue. The fact that we didn't do anything wrong does not stop people from suing the city.
I just want to, somebody said that the last, the last council meeting, that there were people working that weren't, you know, entirely on the list. They are on the list, like Mayor Williams, they're on the list. No, I mean, they, they had just mentioned that last time, they said there were people still working that weren't on the list. They are on the list, the people, you know, still working, my friend, that, from the mayor.
So, I, I think the issue is that you can, it's so hard to get the full, complete, unredacted list, that, you know, I would not be comfortable with language that says, anybody that's currently on it, you know, I mean, you know, stays on it. So, I, I'd have to look more into Mr. Moore's suggestions about the spout, like, exactly what he had called out in the 2000 language. But I just want to make sure that we are truly focusing this on the people that originally were intended, you know, nineteen eighty-three, you know, Mrs. Hanahan could probably give us a better example, idea of exactly when they gave up the, the pay or the benefits in the early eighties, but...
You get more information than I do, so I can't tell you.
Yeah, I was going to say, you were there then, so.
I wasn't there then.
No, I didn't, yeah.
Sorry.
So, anyways, so, long story short, I mean, I, again, I, unless somebody like shows, like, we're specific people that need to be on this, you know, are not being on this because of this language, you know, I would prefer to, I think this, personally, keep this language, or at least something pretty similar to this. I would just be worried about changing it so that it includes, you know, everybody that it currently includes. So, we talked, we also, somebody had mentioned the, I just want to say this to Mrs. Wallace, it was mentioned about the surviving spouses. I mean, you know, just to emphasize, and Donna said it too, that nobody's looking to get rid of the surviving spouses. You all were there, you know, you were there taking care of children and other things that while your husbands were working, so. I don't think anybody's looking to do that at all.
Can we, oh, I'm sorry.
That's very funny, yes. And then about the, actually, yeah, that's good, go ahead.
Thank you. Where it is in here, where it's the committee, and it's five people, and the five people are, well, there's five peoples on, people on the committee, and it says, two people are from the, the mayor gets to appoint, three people, the mayor appoints, and two people come from the retirees. And I think it's stacked against the retirees doing it that way. And I think it should be three people from the retirees on this committee, and two people appointed by the mayor.
And I can just tell you that, in terms of a committee that would, that would decide, it could potentially decide, that would have a financial impact on the city, I don't know of any committee that, of this city where that is not controlled by people appointed by the mayor. I mean, I think that's just, that's just good fiscal, you know, if, if we had other people who said, we're going to, we're going to let all these people in, and the city has no say in that, or doesn't have a majority say in that, there's a, there's a financial interest in that.
What about the financial interest to the retirees? It's the same, it's just backwards. I mean, there's a financial interest to the retirees also.
There is, but I, I see Donna's point, where if, you're talking about taxpayer money, it's, the idea of putting, it's, it's putting the, putting the control of the taxpayers, of the budget, in the hands of a majority, of a, of a committee with the majority that are not officials of the city is, yeah, there's, that, that seems a little odd. I, I will say this, though, this is the language that is from the current trust and the committee, the, the way the trust is set up now, the, you know, the way that, that group is, is defined, the way that debt management group is defined. And this involves a lot less. This is really pretty simple. Did you work, do you have the twenty years? Did you start before seventy-five? Okay, you're in. Or, oh, you didn't start until nineteen eighty-four? No, you're not in. I mean, this, there's a lot less discretion on this.
Right. Well, okay, there was a spot in here where it says, after the appeal process, it says in all cases, and I know, I think you wanted, I think you thought this was real important to say that the decision was final. Can they not apply the next, why can't they apply the next year again?
Well, that's, that's a different, we, that kind of language can happen, but the, if the, you've got to have language in that the decision of the committee is final, or you have to provide who they can appeal to from the committee. So, that's what it is to say, it's the committee gets the final word. That's the point I have in that language in there.
Yes, but this was, this is under the appeal process.
Okay, yeah, and the, the decision of an appeal, for, you file your application, or you file your, if it's an annual registration, and the committee says you didn't do, you got it in late, the decision, either the decision of the committee is final, or you have to put in there that they, or, or you're applying, they get a right to appeal to somebody else.
No, well, and I'm not even talking about, I'm sorry, I'm not being clear. Can they then apply the next year also?
That is something, we can put that into, we can put language in there. The way this was designed, the way that the, the outline of it was presented, to me, the idea was, no, if you fail this year, you never get a dime after that. The idea being, we don't want the list to grow and shrink. The list should never get bigger, it should only get smaller. So, that was the original intent, as it was sent to me. But that's, the language can be added, that would be along those lines, kind of what we talked about before, that would, that would deal with that. So, you file a registration and application, and, you know, sorry, you know, if you're not, if you're not in in time, well, you're not in in time. That's about the only.
Well, you know, and I just, my only question with this is, is when I talk to you, interpreting this is going to go to the committee. You know, they're going to be interpreting this.
Mm-hmm.
If there's any questions on, it's going to be interpreted by the committee. And depending on who's on the committee, you know, it, you know, the mayor can put, I'm not saying names, three names on, that will override everybody. You know, I just think they need something, I think they ought to be able to apply again. I mean, why does it have to be final? I mean, why does it have to be final then? You know, another board might think, "Oh, well, he was right all along, he should have been in."
Well, I agree with that, too. I mean, just like I said earlier in the meeting, any government program has a deadline for when you apply for it, but you can always reapply.
So, can we put that in there?
Sure. Well, I mean, but here's the thing, for how, I'm trying to wrap my head around the idea that there would be, any mayor would appoint a committee that's going to, we're just going to deny them. We know they're eligible, we're just going to deny them, because we want to save money.
Not that simple. I mean, we have all seen things in politics happen. We have all seen things, and that's all I'm going to say, and I sit up here and I see it. And so, you just never know what's going to happen. And, you know, that's, if they can't reapply, it was just something I wanted to discuss and bring up.
I mean, at that point, though, they would, so let's just say they apply, and they truly should be on, but they were denied, they submit the appeal, like it says here, and there's, you know, there's 60 days to review it by the administrative committee, they still say no, I mean, at that point, they're just gonna, they file a lawsuit saying the city was wrong here, and then a court will...
People don't have the money just to go file lawsuits.
Yeah.
We're just giving them the opportunity to go and reapply again, or in two years or three years.
Okay, so you're saying the next year, they would, they would get denied this year, you're saying they would apply again next year?
I guess what the question would be is, how many consecutive years are you eligible to reapply? If, is that unlimited, or is there a term limit on where maybe you can apply for, say, at least four years? That way you get the benefit of possibly a new, a new board? Because if the board's appointed by the administration and the governing board, or whoever the five people would be, you'd have the opportunity to have a different set of people, at least over a four-year, you know, within a four or five-year period. But, I mean, if you can keep reapplying for the next 15 years or so, it almost, and you keep being denied for 15 years, it almost seems fruitless to have that be part of the process. I don't know what would, when is, how many appeals, or how many times are you able to apply before that goes away, I guess would be the question.
I can work on something.
I had some questions also about, which I get in here, or which I get in here, which I'd like to discuss, is a penalty. You know, these people have gone for years and years without getting paid. At this point, they still don't know if and when they're going to get paid. I would like, is it possible to put something in here that failure to pay these, the benefits by the May 15 date by the city will cause a penalty to be incurred by the city of Norwood calculated on the same rate or percentage that the city of Norwood incurs for the late payments to the pension amounts? Then, with that, what you won't see is, "Oh, this is just the retirees, we, you know, we don't need to pay them," which is, or, you know, "We're not going to pay them." This gives them a reason to have to pay them, because they have been neglect, they have been, they haven't been paid for years, come on. And so, this would just, I think, have, I mean, we have a penalty if we don't pay our water bills. We get a big penalty. And the city puts that on us, so I think that the retirees should, should have the same opportunity of being sure their money's going to come in.
Are you saying if this possibly has an opportunity to pass, that the payment would need to be in the mail going to the recipients by the 15th, every year?
Well, that was a date, what's the indebted date put on there?
Well, whatever date it is, it could be, you know, the 31st, whatever's, whatever date's set, that, that's what, yeah, I would say that it would have to happen.
And, and I just think that would ensure that our, that the retirees would get their payment.
One thing that hasn't come up tonight is the fact of the contract.
I know that the mayor, at the fiscal meeting, asked about that, and I believe, and I have to check with Mrs. Lake there, they said to get an opinion from Keith, that according to them, you could have, they don't care if you have a contract or an ordinance or anything. All they're worried about is the funds. Is that correct, Mrs. Lake?
April Davis did say that, checked with the law department, that the role of the fiscal committee was to review the impact of ordinances or contracts, but that whether we would have an ordinance or a contract would strictly be up to the law department. And if, before a contract could be signed, it would have to be approved by the committee to check for the financial impact on the plan, but it was up to you.
Well, I'll go back to what we talked about at council meeting. I'm not sure who the contractor would be with, because we could authorize the safety service director to enter, to sign a contract with 160 people, or 140, or whatever that number is. That's the only way the contract could be, because there's not a bargaining unit on the other side of the table. There's no consider, there's no, I cannot, and I've spoken with Mr. Gary about it, we cannot envision a way that there would be a binding, enforceable contract, that would actually, that anybody could actually, "Oh, the, oh, the city decided to change it, they paid us late, I'm going to sue them," on the basis of they breached the contract. I don't see, I don't see any way that that could be enforceable.
I think the reason, when that was first brought up, and they were told, "Hey, if you've signed, you know, if you guys approve of this," as I've said, you know, it would be in a contract form, is so that it can't just, they don't have to go through this every year. They're going to take it away this year, they're going to take it away that year. And apparently, with an ordinance, it can be taken away at any time. With a contract, it's not so easy. So, is there any way to put into the contract a time limit?
There's, no, there really isn't, the same way you can't say this, you can't pass, it's something that we pledged, that we, you know, that's controlling on the next council or the council after, that says, "We promise to spend $80,000 on this," or "We promise to keep the community center open for the next 10 years." It's not, you can't bind a future council that way.
Is there any language that could put, that could be put in here to protect them, that it, that when this happens again, which it'll happen again, we hope not, that they are properly notified, they are given the correct informa, well, that's, you can't do it, I understand that. Is there any kind of language that we can put in here to protect our retirees, so they don't have to deal with this every year, and come and fight, and, you know, be fearful everything's going to be taken away?
Not, I mean, you can put in language that we, you know, council agrees to bind itself to keep this obligation until the end. You can put it in there, it's just not legally binding, is the problem. And so, nobody, you can't sue us, nobody can sue us to have that enforced if council repeals it.
I mean, my, my thing on this whole contract, you know, I agree with Mr. Moore, I feel, you know, I don't know what the future council is ever going to have to deal with, I don't know what future emergencies the city's going to have to deal with. You know, I would not, you know, want to bind, just like I don't want to be bound by, you know, actions that the council took 20 years ago, I would not want to be bound, I would not want to bound them 20 or 30 years from now, to not have any opportunity to renegotiate or do anything with this, if it, if the situation would arise. So, personally, I mean, if you can find a way, Mr. Moore, that it works, I mean, you know, we can talk about it, but it sounds to me like it would almost be more work than it's worth, considering the current program is kind of an at-will program for council as well. So it's, it wouldn't be changing, you know, like, right now, we could just, if we're, you know, get rid of it, nobody's proposing it, but we could just get rid of it right now. I mean, and the same thing here. This program actually fixes the issue that we're currently having, in the sense that it gives us stable, predictable payments, that we're going to know, you know, exactly how much we're going to owe, and it's not going to grow. And that's the whole point of this. With the retirement health care, it keeps growing every year.
So can I ask, okay, if this was to pass, are you saying, you know, would you, are you saying then that you wouldn't vote for it to be taken away next year?
I would not vote for it to be taken away next year. Or anytime, I mean, I have no...
Really?
Like, contracts, like I said, as far as binding future councils, where, so, is it something like, the council that comes in on the first of the year, of whatever year it might be, they could have a contract that binds them for two years, but even with that, they could still break it if they wanted to.
Well, you, there's lots of contracts that the city can enter, that council can approve, and the city can enter, that will bind the city for more than two years. Bonds are a perfect example. They bind the city, require the city to do something to make payments for 30 years. But, in exchange for that promise, the people that bought the bonds gave the city millions of dollars. So there's something, there's an exchange, it's on the other side. And here, we have a consent decree that came, issued by a court, that came out of when we were sued in the past, that says, "The city retains the right to amend, modify, or abolish this program at any time." So we have no legal, we have, there's nothing in, on the other side of the exchange. So we can't, there is no contract we can do. So, we're in kind of the same situation that PERS and Social Security and Medicare are in, where it's, "Well, this is what we intend to do, and, and we're, you know, we, you know, we're paying, I'm paying FICA, and they send me a letter every year, every six months, or, "Here's what your social security benefits are going to be," but, you know, that could easily change next year. You know, in theory, kind of hopefully it changes soon, that the terms change relatively soon, or there will be nothing by the time I retire. So, that's kind of the situation we're in, there's just, there's no way to legally bind the city in any, in any legal sense. You can put in there, "This is our intent, we expect this to last forever," and nobody can possibly foresee that this could ever change, but, you know, as soon as you do that, something's going to happen.
Okay, well, then, let's go with, if we can talk with the oversight, if we can go back to that. Right now, it is Joe, Joe Gears is the administrator of this. I spoke with Benovations, the CEO of Benovations, and when I first spoke to him, this was back in the summer, and I said that Kevin said they were all paid up. He said, "Kevin wouldn't say that." And I said, "Yeah, there were people in this meeting that heard it." And he said, "Well, we know we're not paid up." And he said...
We know they're not paid up.
Huh?
We know they're not paid up.
And he said, "But let me get back with you." And I said, "Okay." Because I'm like, "Well, you know, these people want to know what's going on, can I give them something?" And he came back to me, and he said, "Joe Gears is the administrator for the city, I will not speak a word, you know, anything else, I won't talk to anybody." And he said, "You have to get all your information from Joe Gears, he has everything we have." So, you know, I know he's administering it, somebody has to. I mean, you don't hire a company like this and let them take over without some oversight. I mean, are you going to have a roofer not check his work? It just doesn't seem the proper way to do anything. So, that's why I want to put in, you know, I had said, it should be, I thought it should be administered by the city of Norwood's mayor's office, and I think that's what it is now, his administration. You know, we already decided, and the auditor's office would be required to perform the record filing, to record, file the mailings, and do the committee reports. And I think it should be spread out, that he has to yearly, annually, give a report to the mayor, and then the mayor needs to annually give a report to us and to the participants, so they know what's going on and where things are. So that's why I have in there, so that there is, if it's just a committee, nobody has anybody to go back on, it'll come back to council, like it has. You know, if there's a question or a problem, it's not getting taken care of, there's only, the only place to come is to council. And if you look at all the council people here, and I'm telling you, all the council people don't know all the ins and outs of this plan, even if it's simple like this. So that's why I would like to see somebody who we can go to, if need be, or these people can go to, with questions. I mean, he's overseeing it now, somebody is. I mean, if it's a committee, if things aren't getting done, who's responsible? It's a volunteer committee.
Yeah, I suppose you could, you could, yeah, it could be the mayor, because he appoints three of them, although they're supposed to, I would think, exercise independently. My only question is, what's the oversight? Because the, kind of the way this, I mean, the committee doesn't, I mean, the committee either approves or not, and sends a list to the auditor, that's it. I mean, they send a list to the auditor, the auditor writes checks, they go out. I mean, that's kind of the whole program.
They don't get the list, you know, they don't do the list in time. People can't, you know, everybody can't be there.
Well, it's question, do you want, do you want that responsibility to fall back on somebody else, as far as who's going, I mean, somebody has to review each and every application, or registration, or whatever term you use. If you don't want this committee to do it, you can pick somebody else, but if you put the obligation on the committee, and it's up to the committee to do it. The same way with the senior trust, you put the obligation to the trust.
At this point, what happens if they don't do it?
Well, the, what you added before is, the city pays a penalty. I mean, I'll be honest with you...
That would make sense, the city makes a penalty.
I mean, you can also, I will say this, if the ordinance says somebody is entitled to something, then they do have a legal right to file a lawsuit, and they would have a right to come to count, they'd have a legal right to file a lawsuit, because they have a right under the ordinance. The same way that if I meet the requirements to get a building permit for this, and they just won't issue it, even though I meet the code, you have the legal right to file a lawsuit, even though the city can change the terms of the zoning code anytime they want.
Well, and it, but according, gosh, I'm not trying to be argumentative, I'm just trying to, please know that. You know, according to the court order, it said everybody had to be paid on time, and they weren't paid on time. And, yeah, they would have, I mean, they would have the right to file a lawsuit, they're not filing lawsuits, they don't want to do that.
Well, I understand that, but the reason they were not paid on time, is the same reason that Duke was not paid on time, and pretty much, the employees were not paid on time, and all of the other legal obligations the city had were not paid on time, except bondholders. Other than that, I don't think anybody got paid on time. And I understand the retirees got pushed back much further than a lot, but not as far as some of the people that were entitled to tax returns. They got pushed off even farther.
Okay. Well, then, I will, you know, since there is a penalty, I think, I, you know, whatever you want to write, that's fine.
I mean, if you want it to come back to council, then council can review all the applications.
I don't think council wants to do it.
I don't think so, either.
And that's the whole point of this, is to have an administrator, so that this doesn't come back to council, like it is now for, you know. And I think that's the, that was the whole point of having somebody do oversight on it, or somebody administering it from the administration, not council. We don't need this job. And I had also talked about, you know, before this thing goes into effect, and you told me it couldn't be done, that these retirees get payment. I mean, they're still owed money. We can get no answers from the city, and I know it's not you, I'm not going to say that. We can get no answer from the city, and I know that Mr. Stitt said, "Oh, it's all Benovations." Well, who's overseeing Benovations? Have they just been hired to do this, and we just totally ignore everything that goes on? So, we can't get, I can get no information, they can't get any, it's their money, it's owed to them. And from what I'm hearing, they're still saying, "We owe you nothing." So, I would think, this is a give and take. They're, you know, they're going to lose something, but can we get, can we do something to give them some information on their claims, before this is passed, or before, I had put in here, I wanted to see them get paid before this went into effect. Then we all start clean. And I was told we couldn't do that, you couldn't pass an ordinance upon something that is going to happen in the future.
It'll never go into effect. It would never go into effect.
Well, and that's what the scary thing is, are these people going to get paid? And that is actually our responsibility, if you look at this, and this is an ordinance by us, you know... If you look at this and this is an ordinance by us, you know, we should have all been outraged by this. And they can't get any information? You know, that's the sad thing. Nobody will talk to them.
So with regards to the people getting paid for the past years, I mean, you know, legally, anything that they, any claims they have for, let's just say it starts in 2019. So for any, anything they have in 2018, even if it doesn't get paid by December 31st, 2018, like let's say they submit the claim on January 3rd, 2019, or whatever. I mean, it says here, the way that the ordinance is read, they're going to get paid for that. So it's not like as soon as we--
They haven't been paid for 2015, some of them.
That is, oh, yeah, I hear you.
So--
Anything that they, all I'm trying to say is it sounded like, yeah, that's just, I just feel like that is a separate issue from what we're talking about now. That is the administration of the current program. And it's not, yeah, it's not related to, it's not related to this, but it is important. I'm not saying it's not important.
It is, I think it is because they are giving up something, and I think they should have answers before things are given up. They are giving up their insurance, or we're taking it away, their insurance that they They're playing, I mean, they're playing in good faith, and they have all along, for years and years, they've given up stuff. And, you know, we all know information is power, they have no information. And how hard is it to give them correct information? How hard is it to give them information about money they're owed? I mean, who is looking into Benovations? Who is saying, hey, what's going on, where are the records? Nobody seems to care. I mean, they seem to care, I seem to care, I can get nobody to help me with this stuff. And it's just a shame that they're treated, you know, the elderly are treated this way. And, you know, I wanted it in this contract, that they should be paid before this contract goes into effect.
I don't know how you verify that.
And I know that can't be done.
I don't know how you verify it.
Yeah.
I don't know how council could guarantee, could satisfy itself that all of the claims have been paid. If, as you say, Benovation is not telling the truth and the auditor's office is not telling the truth, who would you ask? Do you send a survey to all of the retirees and then 20 of them send back things saying, I haven't been paid on this? How does council verify that?
Is--
That's my, that's my big concern. I don't know, I do not know how to figure that out.
Tell me this, Mr. Moore, who is responsible for Benovations?
I was, in theory, the Safety Service Director would be as far as, along with everything else, yeah.
Can, oh, I can't do that, this is a committee meeting. So really, what we need to do is to get Mr. Gears here to explain to everybody what's going on and where we are and where we stand with this, and keep that a separate issue.
Yeah, I was going to say, I agree, I just think it's two separate issues. I think that whether we pass this or we don't pass it, we probably should still get Mr. Gears here to come talk to us about it. I don't, you know, I hear you on that, I think it is important, and they, there should be probably, I think there has been questions that have been unanswered. You know, I know I haven't had all my emails returned, or phone calls returned when it comes to the current plan. So, yeah, I agree with you, but I just don't know if that affects, so, and I--
Keith already said it doesn't affect this and it can't be put in here.
Thank you.
You know, the auditor's office can only pay what they get billed from Benovation.
Correct.
And I'm with you, it is frustrating to call Benovations. You get nothing, they won't talk to you.
No, they don't call our people back either, and they're getting paid to administer this plan. I don't care if they were paid late. They're paid to do a job, and nobody holds them, is holding them to the job, which is just, you know, if this was your insurance, or, you know, their personal insurance, they feel a lot different. If it was their personal money, it's, you know, just to give people information, you know, you might be paid next, you know, we'll have you paid the end of the year, not which they heard, everybody's paid up, and we all know that didn't happen.
I've been taking notes, and I will propose what my notes are. That we say additional information is required regarding the following items. Can the auditor's office accept the responsibility to send out all notices and collect those responses? If the applicant misses the initial year, they should be able to apply in future years but receive no benefits in the year that the application was missed. Can the Millennium Plan be canceled with notice or is it renewed for a year? The initial applications and future renewals will be mailed by December 15th each year with follow-up notices sent in January and February to those who were not heard from. That would be three letters.
I'm sorry, would you repeat that?
That the initial applications would be mailed out December 15th, and if that, people did not hear from them in January, they would be sent a second letter in January and a third one in February if they were not heard from.
At this point, doesn't this say you have to do it by January 31st?
I'm going to make it December 15th.
For the initial.
For the initial.
She's talking about just the first year, which you have--
The first year, the initial.
That's fine.
Because that's the thing, you want to get them in the first year.
Right.
So we can send it out in December.
Well, wait, are we talking about, oh, we're talking about next year at this, yes.
Whatever the initial year is.
Thank you.
Initial applications. Clarify that when and if divorced, the ex-spouse would not be covered from that date forward. Clarify if all on the current list will remain covered or only those who meet eligibility requirements as outlined in the ordinance. Can a penalty be applied to the financial benefit if retirees are not paid on time by May 15th according to this ordinance, equal to the penalty paid to the employee retirement systems?
Let me, does anybody have any clue what that is? Because I think the PERS, Police and Fire, you get like 30, 60 days before they start tagging you. And I don't even know what the rate is, and it's varied, so.
That's the clarification.
And so if anybody, that's, but that's--
I think it's at the time.
If there's anything you want added or off, let me know.
Like an interest thing, or that may be complicated as opposed to just a flat fee.
At some point, do we actually put a cap on here so we can get that cap on?
Cap on what?
New people coming on.
New people. New people that have come on already?
People who have not come on yet that could be added, so that nobody else could be added.
And I think that is--
Well, if you've got 20, you got to step 20 years of, 20-year full-time service and you had to have started before 1975, if you're not working for the city now, you must already be on it, you know?
What if somebody gets remarried?
Oh, the remarriage.
Is that spouse on there?
Yeah, we'll clarify the remarriage.
That needed to be clarified, yes or no?
So clarify if the eligible, eligible--
So what I'm, you know, and then if it's happened, nobody can be, you know, and that would be the only thing to add somebody, wouldn't it?
Yeah, that's the, that's the thing, is adding that nobody else can be added, and at the same time, you can apply for the first time in 10 years, or you can have your application denied 10 years and then get in on the 11th year. You can't have both of those.
Right, okay.
But, yeah, we can define, like, you have to do this, and then if you, you know, it's only people that's current spouses as of the date this ordinance goes into effect kind of thing. So, yeah, we can do that, that kind of a language.
On the penalty--
If you miss this, if you change this, you got to change this.
So on the penalty, I have no idea what the pension, the PERS penalty or the Police and Fire Pension Fund penalty is, but, you know, of course, we just want to look at that to make--
Just one information.
Yeah, okay, perfect, good, good.
Get a sense of what it is. And when it comes back, council may even say, you know, let's do it like the water bill, it's just 10% after, you know, it's 10% if you miss that date, and then it's another 10% if you're six months after that, or just, it'll be easy. If it's prevailing interest rate, that's going to be a nightmare to calculate, so something like that maybe. We'll find out what--
50%.
We'll find out whatever Police and Fire do, you know?
I'm trying.
And sometimes they don't, you know, if you go, if you, if you call, it used to be, you could call them and say, oh, we're going to be even later than that, and they'd be, oh, that's fine, they would come in. As long as, as long as you called them, they were okay with that. They don't take those calls from us anymore.
Anything else that I missed?
Well, I believe that's how a lot of the retirees feel about a lot of, you know, they're just informed they're okay with it. So they're, they're not just sitting around not knowing.
The event probably at 7:30.
You want to add?
Sorry. I want to make sure I get this right.
Let me ask, do you want a new draft back to the committee? Or are you porting it out?
I think we should meet the committee, as a committee again, if, before--
I would think that we just need these things answered before we can even proceed. But that's up to you all, it's not my, that's--
So do you think we might need another committee meeting then to hear the answers and talk about the answers?
And I think if we get these answers, then it may--
Like, we may be able, I could do new language for a lot of this, you know, but I figured the committee would want to see it again, I didn't know if you wanted it officially back to the committee, leave it, leave it, if you leave it in committee, it stays in committee unless it doesn't meet till the end of the year, and then it dies, and I'll just send the draft to somebody. Well, I'll send it to you. I'll send it to John, it'll be on him to fix it.
So I'll read this again.
Okay.
So, "To the Honorable Counsel, City of Norwood, Ohio, we are committee of the whole, whom is referred the retirees' benefit program. Beg leave to submit the following report. Additional information is required regarding the following items. Can the auditor's office send all notices and collect the responses? If the applicant misses the initial year, they should be able to apply in future years but receive no benefits in the years that the application was missed. Can the Millennium Plan be canceled with notice or is it renewed for an entire year? The initial applications and future renewals will be mailed by December 15th each year with follow-up notices sent in January and February to those who were not heard from. Clarify that when and if divorced, the ex-spouse is not covered from that date forward. Clarify if eligible retiree remarries, would the spouse be added or not, defined? I think the answer we wanted is no, is that correct? Clarify if all on the current list will remain covered or only those who meet the eligibility requirements as outlined in the proposed ordinances. And can the penalty, can a penalty be applied to the financial benefit payment if retirees are not paid on time May 15th, equal to the penalty paid to the employer retirement systems?"
And can I ask where you're here going to go to to get, is it Keith, that Mr. Moore's going to answer these, or--
I think I would send this, I would suggest that we send this to the auditor's office, to the Law Department.
The mayor and the treasurer.
The mayor and the treasurer. I don't know that the mayor's office will.
But they ought to know what's going on because we're about to volunteer him to administer the program, among other things, so they should, might want to know before council does that.
So I will clarify that this committee report will be sent to--
It'd be in their packets, but, yeah.
Law department. Mayor and Safety Service Director.
Yeah.
And then I'll note that another committee of the whole meeting will be convened once we receive these answers.
Yep. I move we adjourn.
Please?
I move we adjourn.
We don't have to move.
Well--
We'll just adjourn, and I have the committee report up here, if people will sign it, please.